From the window and, you know, say, "Help!" Linda Simon told us troopers knocked on her door.
Cops came up and just checked the area out around our house and asked me if everything was okay and was there anything suspicious?
The troopers even checked well near her home to make sure it was empty.
It's possible that he's here. It's possible that he's not here.
Alvin and Mary Hall also got a visit from troopers. They said they were reading the newspaper when they heard a knock.
And just wanted to make sure we were all right and ask if we'd seen anything.
Tell them about a place that they may not have searched that they might want to take a look at.
They told us they're not scared.
Only real danger, I think, to people like us is if we were to be taken hostage. We lock our doors, lock our windows, turn all the lights on around the house, and, you know, stay put.
And that's exactly what state police say people should be doing, remaining vigilant, but not living in fear. They tell us tips can still be very important to this case. If you have any information or think you have seen Eric Frain, you should call the tip line. That's 1-866-326-7256. Back to you in the studio.
Lori, does today's rain seem to be impacting the search at all?
Candace, the state police told us the rain did not impact their efforts. Whether or not it impacted what Frain is up to, we don't know. They said that depends on how prepared he is.
Okay, Lori Mydelford reporting live in our Polk County newsroom. Lori.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and also for all of those who have passed away in our community during the past week, especially Harvey Applegate, who retired as the superintendent of the fire department and served many years as a member of the Scranton Fire Department.
Mr. Rexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. McGaw?
Here.
Dispense with the reading in a minute.
Third order, 3A minutes of the composite pension board meeting held August 27, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3B, agenda for the city planning commission meeting held September 24, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3C, check received from Lutherwood, which is payment in lieu of taxes for the city of Scranton in the amount of $6,000.
On behalf of council and the city of Scranton, we would like to thank Lutherwood, who has been very diligent in their payment in lieu of taxes to the city, and we would like to thank them again for this donation. Any other comments? If not received, then filed.
3D, tax assessors' results report for the hearing date held September 3, 2014.
Are there any comments? Not received, then filed.
3E, tax assessors' reports for the hearing dates to be held October 2, 8, and 15 of 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed. Are there any announcements from council?
I have one, Mr. McGaw. On Sunday, the Waldorf Park will be having an Actiki Fest. An Actiki Fest is kind of like an Oktoberfest, but it's at the tiki bar. It will begin at 12:00 PM and run until 6:00. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would like to announce that it appears that the elevator repairs will be taking place starting October 6, which will necessitate our moving council meetings to another venue for the time period that the elevator is out of service. The dates for the meetings will be October 9, 16, 23, and 29, and they will be held at the theater at Lackawanna College, same time for 6 o'clock caucus, 6:30 meeting. And the reason for the 29th, which is a Wednesday, is the theater is not available on that Thursday night, so rather than cancel a meeting, we are going to move it ahead one night. Okay, so that's the theater at Lackawanna College for October 9, 16, 23, and 29.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodawana?
Joan Hodawana, Scranton resident. With regard to item 6A on the capital budget, I was looking at the backup papers, and I didn't see the actual itemized budget. Did I miss it, or was it not attached? Did you see it, Marie? I saw it like the ordinance sheet, but I didn't see the actual...
I thought it was there last week.
I'm sorry?
Was it there last week?
Last week. Yeah. Last week? But it's not attached, now, okay. Maybe I can see that later. Does anyone have a status on what's going on with Goodwill now that they got their approval? Have they started any work?
I'm sorry?
Goodwill. Have they started any work now that they've gotten an approval from HUD?
That I do not know.
Okay. I'll be watching that, because heading towards the winter months, I thought maybe they would start by October, you know, if they had a plan to. Yesterday, I went to the composite pension board meeting and the Scranton Parking Authority meetings. With regard to the composite pension board, I asked the board about the state audit, and I asked them about the finding where the MMO was paid late, and we incurred $185,300 penalty because of it last year. I asked them if they were aware whether or not we had good internal controls so that would not happen again. I was surprised when the board told me that I should ignore the cause for the finding that is in the report, that Mr. DiPascuali tells every city the same thing, lack of adequate internal control procedures. And basically, what they told me in words to some effect was, the real problem was they ran out of money. So my question becomes, well, why would the city's management give a response that they agreed with the finding without exception if internal controls were not the problem? And number two, what assurance do the taxpayers have that we're not going to run out of money again this year, since I think this year is a worse year than last year? I didn't really get much of a response, but I think people should be painfully aware when December 31 rolls around, and hopefully, we will have access to the business administrator's office to get confirmation that that last MMO has been paid, or we're going to get hit with another fine. And they said that will happen.
Just for information's sake, it's not a fine. It's the interest on what would have been paid.
Yeah. Interest by any other... $185,000...
Okay. I'm just saying it's not a fine.
Well, then, we're going to get hit with another interest hit, okay?
Okay.
I would not want that to happen again. I think we should... The taxpayers should be told before December 31 that that's coming, and people need to be planning for that. Hopefully, we don't have such a hole in this year's budget that that's going to happen again. But I don't have a worm and fuzzy, because we're not seeing much about the budget really right now. And I went to the parking authority meeting last night, and I said to them, "Where is the parking authority's auditive financial statements that Mr. Rossi is looking for?" And they basically referred me to the receiver, Mr. Washell. Does anybody know where I can find him? Because those auditive financial statements for the parking authority are quite important since the parking authority has what we might call issues. Anybody know how to get hold of Mr. Washell, since he's the only one who knows the status of those statements for 2013?
Mr. Washell would be the one that would have that information.
Is he supposed to be right next door to the Hilton? Is that where his office is supposed to be? Or has he moved?
Yeah, that's where his office is.
He's there?
The former parking authority offices, yes.
Okay, because I walked down there. I didn't see any little shingles saying Scranton Parking Authority.
Well, it doesn't. I think it says Central Parking.
Ah-ha, Central Parking.
Yeah.
Okay, just wandering there. I do hope that he has completed those auditive financial statements, because they should... They're a major issue, and I don't see how Mr. Rossi can give us a valid audit for the city without that input. So somebody needs to be asking those questions. And finally, Mr. McGaw, many congratulations on your upcoming nuptials. Understand Saturday? Understand 1:00 PM? I won't be there, but rumor has it, what is it, Holy Rosary?
Yes.
Good luck.
Oh, thank you very much.
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
I'm Talon Varski. When this council was seated, we had a hope for a couple of things. One was that you would answer the questions when they was put to you. The second was that you would be more open and have your caucus meetings out here on the floor. Last week, you had a very important meeting back in the office. I think the people had a right to hear what was going on with that one. And the third one was that you would be more open and have less emergency legislation passed. It seems like we've lost on all three. So far this year, this council has not voted no in final passage on anything. Let me repeat that. Not one councilman has voted no in seventh order.
Mr. Varski, I did.
I think you voted on...
I voted no.
In fifth or sixth order.
And seventh.
We'll check it out. There's only about 25 or so agendas to check. Pretty soon, this council will have some tough decisions to make. I hope you're up to it.
Good evening, council. Marie Schumacher.
Good evening.
I'd like to start with 7C on tonight's agenda. I reviewed the materials from... that were in last week's, and I saw nothing about the fee in the contract, and I can't imagine a contract without a fee. I did notice tonight the letter that went along with it, that Mr. Bolzoni wrote to the mayor and the city clerk, and I think the treasurer and the solicitor. But check the fee section. It says, "We'll pay for the above services," but there is no fee that's in the contract, and I think that's very poor business practice. That should be in the contract. And I would hope that you would not vote on that tonight until you get that done. That's... You're giving an open-ended offer of money to the bank. Okay, moving along, I would like to know on... Whoops, excuse me. Last week, it was 7C where I would like to know... This was the going for a grant to complete Phase 2 of the Community Surveillance Network, and I'd like to know where do the dollars come from if the grant is not received? I did review the capital budget, which I would... That's where I would have hoped to find it, but the capital budget gives like no details. Did you guys look at the capital budget? And were you... You were satisfied with it? That there was sufficient detail for what was going to be... The work that was going to be performed?
I thought it was fine. I thought it was much better than what we've had in the past.
That's one. Anybody else?
I thought it detailed what projects the city was looking at, and I thought it detailed where they were going to possibly receive funding.
Okay. Well, one out of five. I would like to know, Mr. Rogan, what is... If you have checked, or if you would check, I recall going back several councils. The building, Tom tells me it's the... Was the Jersey Lackawanna Train Station? I understand that the government invested a lot of money to put a slate roof on that building, and it was with the intention that that was going to be developed. And I recall, the last discussion I recall was somebody followed up on it, and it was, "Well, when the Lackawanna... Not going to do anything till after the Lackawanna Avenue Bridge is completed." And that's been completed for quite a while now, and I still see no action there.
You're referring to the Lawrence Brick Building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, I mean, I think maybe we made a bad investment if nothing's going to be done with that, so... But I would like to know that. Again, discuss the paying agent fee. And I'd like to know if council intends to take Mr. Evans' offer to make contact with the nonprofits regarding whether or not they are truly charitable? And in what form will that take?
Well, I would hope... I would hope that at some point, when the administration is ready, that we can get together, and I want to participate in those discussions. But...
I thought you made a finite offer to do those letters and send it out.
I did. Well, no. Basically, my offer is to participate in the discussion.
Oh, participate? Okay.
Yeah, with the administration, and also, you know, whenever they...
Have you made any contact with the administration on whether they're interested at all?
No, I'm going to talk to Dave Bolzoni next week about it.
Okay, so you'll know something by next Thursday, you think?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay. I'll ask again next week. Thank you. Any answers to my questions from last week?
On the Kane Street project, I'll address that in motions.
Regarding the fees for victims of crimes, I actually spoke to Councilman Lexler following the meeting, and I know he spoke to police chief regarding that issue. This legislation is specific only to accident reports, not crime reports.
Well, accidents can be crimes.
Well, they would be covered under insurance in most cases.
Motor vehicle accidents.
Again, out of time. Okay, I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. Taxes paid, fees paid. I have a little pass out for you folks. Now, as you can see on the paper, it's from Boston University, compliments of Joan. She passed it to me, and it's on sales tax. And apparently, this study has uncovered that there's sales suppression technology. This article is much longer. I really would have ran out of ink printing the whole thing for everybody. But we're losing about 900... Over $900 billion a year in sales tax, just by restaurants alone, cheating the system. Every... So many customers come in, and it deletes the program, the sales tax, and of course, then there's no income tax to be paid on that. You're showing a lower profit margin and so forth, so... And then, on the back of the header page, there's an article from a book that I've acquired called A Fine Print, David K. Johnston. It's about how a multitude of companies have gotten authorization from states to deduct income tax, PA income tax, or wherever income tax, whatever state, out of an employee's paycheck and keep it in their pocket, not turn it over. Now, I'm neutral on Act 76 up until this. I heard it mentioned last week, and I don't want to rain on anybody's parade. I like everybody up there, but it concerns me that people are salivating as to how much more they can cheat the state out of these businesses. For instance, Michael Francis, does anybody know who he is? He was a son of a mafia don. The man wound up... The father wound up in prison, and they inducted him in New York City, and he actually went into... He was called an earner. Didn't shoot anybody, didn't kill anybody, but he set up a wholesale gasoline company. It was 39 cents a gallon. His take every week cheating the state was $8 to $10 million per week to the Columbo crime family. So after six or eight months, they come to clamp down on him, and it would be shuttered. Well, after about six or eight years of this, they finally caught up with this Russian immigrant from the Russian mafia, and he tattletaled on the works, and we haven't been hearing from him lately. In other words, they took care of him. And Michael Francis spent 10 years in prison, but you can only imagine, that's $400 million a year minimum they were taking in, cheating on sales taxes. So before we go head over heels over something like Act 76, we really need to straighten out the sales tax. In Greece and different countries, they actually licensed the cash register. So it would pay us to actually provide a cash register to every small business that they couldn't insert a program and cheat. And it's millions and millions of dollars, as you can see. I mean, that's not small hardware stores, or anything else, or boutiques, or whatever. That is just $922 million in the restaurant industry in 2010. So it's no wonder that the state looks at us and says, "What do you want, manna from heaven?" They're letting people pilfer it and rob it out from under us. And, okay, I have another article here. I just printed up one, but it's on a drug epidemic, and there's a new law in the state that they're trying to come out with, but one of the things that I find very important is it would provide legal immunity to witnesses who seek emergency help for someone suffering a drug overdose. And I mentioned that last week. If you helped somebody and gave your address, you could very well have somebody from the city up putting a pink slip on your house and banning you from occupying it for six months under city ordinance, so that would concern me. Kid went to his mother's house for a visit, took an overdose, and the landlord got locked out of his tenants. Thank you and have a good night. Oh, by the way, you're getting married Saturday? Don't forget now. The key to a successful marriage... Yes, dear. You're absolutely right, dear, and I'll get to that as soon as I can. I'll leave this with Jamie.
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Lexler?
Thank you, Mr. McGaw. Last week, council was addressed by Sandra Moran from the Hollow Avenue section of Scranton with some concerns about a bridge problem that she was having. As we looked into the matter Thursday night, I spoke to Chief Disarno, and to my pleasant surprise, the chief had already been working on this problem beginning in July. He had been having conversations with Steve Pendrick of the UGI Company, who has control of the access road. As I said, they had been working on this since July, and finally, they got together last Tuesday to finalize some type of agreement. So at the meeting was Chief Al Lucas, DPW Director Dennis Gallagher, some residents of Hollow Avenue, and Mr. Christopher Clancy, who is the superintendent of operations for UGI. As a result of the meeting, and I'll read what they have here in terms of what they're going to do, "The plan is to clear an access road from the bottom of Whale Street going north along the riverbank and connecting to Hollow Avenue on the eastern side of the creek. The sole purpose of this road will be to allow much-needed access for emergency vehicles if and when needed, and refuge collection vehicles once a week. At this time, usage as a common everyday thoroughfare is not part of the plan. Gates and signage will be finalized and posted on either end of the road." Director Gallagher has expectations of this project starting sometime in October. So once again, I'd like to thank the chief, Representative of UGI, Dennis Gallagher, and the neighbors for bringing this to our attention, and it seems as though this will be... This problem will be corrected soon, so that was very good. Yesterday, or today in the paper, I believe it was, there was a report that the revised Act 205, Act 47 legislation has made it out of the Senate and is heading further in the This week, we have been in contact with city business submitter Bolzoni and Solicitor Shrive in regards to us keeping up to date on what's happening with this bill. There are several different possibilities of the bill as it proceeds, each of which will affect our legislation as we head in towards the budget. The reason why I want to bring that up is they want everyone to know that we are paying attention to this. We are coming up with our plan on how this taxing will influence our budget. Last night, I attended a opening and a viewing party of the new downtown, what's going to be called the Leonard, where Leonard's Hardware was. This building is being done over by Charlie Jefferson, who has also done other projects in town, the Connell Building and the Chamber of Commerce Building. Mr. Jefferson is bringing a special talent to our city with these buildings and with these remodelings. It's going to be a center of activity downtown, and once again, this is something that Mr. Jefferson is doing with private money. Jefferson is doing with private money, and I commend him for taking an active role in the city of Scranton. While we have a lot of problems in our city, we still have quite a few positive things that are happening, and Mr. Jefferson is one of the leaders that's doing that. And I would also like to take my time and congratulate Bill and Warren Kelly about the upcoming wedding on Saturday. Congratulations, and you guys make a great couple, and I wish you all the best in the world.
Yes, just a couple of brief items. I will look into the status of the Goodwill Project following the recent developments there, and hopefully, we will have good news regarding that, as well as the Jersey Lackawanna Train Station. It's one, I know that there were rumors for many years of restaurant going in there, different items, and we'll see where that one stands as well. Regarding the 205 tax that was mentioned in the paper, Councilman Wexler pretty much hit the nail on the head that we have to, unfortunately, the city's in a position where we have to wait to see what the state does, and then react. Hopefully, it won't pass in the State House, but we won't know until their legislative session expires in the next couple of weeks. And then, at that point, we'll see how to best maneuver. I will say, I don't think many people, and I know I certainly wouldn't support levying three-quarters of a percent of wage tax on the residents of Scranton. They certainly can't afford that, and we need to do, and the reason why I supported the commuter tax, and the reason why I'm hoping this becomes law is because we need to do everything we can to reduce the tax burden on our residents, whether it be through a 205 tax, or through an Act 47 commuter tax, which would need court approval, or other options. So that's all on that issue, and that's all for tonight. Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Okay. On the quality of life ordinance, I talked to Pat Hinton, and he has been reviewing the ordinance with City Solicitor Shrive, so hopefully, that's moving along. I also spoke to Hazleton Mayor Joe Yanuzzi, and he agreed to me with Pat and myself, anybody else in council who would like to join us in Hazleton sometime next week, to discuss the ordinance along with his police chief and the License and Inspection Department Head. He was very excited to share his success with the ordinance. I think it's important to see how their implementation went and how it's working right now in order to hit the ground running in Scranton. So thank you, Mayor, and hopefully, we'll see you next week. Also, I'd like to circle back for a few minutes on the Amerosa Plan. As most people know by now, I am in full support of the plan. Do I like every element of the plan? Not by a long shot. But this is the plan, and as I stated in the past several times, cherry-picking things to stay or be removed from the plan will doom this initiative and lead us to receivership or bankruptcy. If we have learned anything from our past failures, it must be this. Do I like selling or leasing the sewer authority? No, but we must find a way to superfund pensions, so we need to see this through to find out if it's feasible. Do I like selling all the assets of the parking authority? No, but we must find a way to superfund, I'm sorry, we must possibly still stick, excuse me, let me backtrack a little bit. Do I like selling assets of the parking authority and possibly being stuck with millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars of debt? No, but I don't like the prospect of investing five or 10 million dollars to repair the garages, only taking us further in debt, and not having the revenue to support that debt. Do I like Act 205? No, of course not. But we must shore up the pensions, again, to avoid receivership or bankruptcy. And of course, without pension reform and new hires enrolled in a 401K-type plan, we will only be kicking the can down the road once again. As each initiative comes before council, I hope to provide ideas to make that initiative better for our taxpayers and residents, as I'm sure my fellow councilmen will as well. As we work to bring financial sovereignty to city government, simply arranging the deck chairs on the Titanic is no longer an option. It's time for action. Thank you. And also, one last comment. Good luck, Councilman, go on, to Saturday. All the best to you and your future bride.
Appreciate it.
And best of luck. I think we all, well, except for Pat, we all can relate to the experience, and it's a great day, so enjoy it.
Look like you're lying, aren't you?
No, I'm not lying at all.
Thank you. Mrs. Schumacher asked a question last week about the Kane Street project, so I'd just like to take a minute and explain that. The Kane Street project will be broken down into two phases. Phase one will be funded by the city for a total cost of $281,871.50. Phase one includes Kane Street reconstruction from Stafford Avenue to South Webster Avenue. Phase one is expected to be funded through the Department of Transportation's Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank Loan Program. The program is a PennDOT-operated program that provides low-interest loans to help fund transportation projects within the Commonwealth. The city will be repaying the loan, if approved, through our liquid fuels allocation, and the loan repayment has no direct general fund impact. Phase one has not begun yet. It's expected to begin pending approval of our loan sometime next spring. It's expected to take approximately one month to complete, according to our city engineer. Phase two, that we voted on last week, is being requested through the local share accounts fund, the Monroe County Gaming Funds. The total cost of phase two is $625,417. Phase two includes Kane Street reconstruction from South Webster Avenue to Windfield Avenue, and is also expected to begin in spring of 2015 and take approximately two months to complete. I received a complaint of constant speeding between Smith's Restaurant and Kelly's Restaurant on Cedar Avenue in South Scranton last week. Chief Graziano forwarded this complaint to Captain Thomas to put out to the patrols in the area to include these blocks on the next speed enforcement detail, so thank him for that. Also, a question was posed last week about the contract with A&amp;M Electrical for the maintenance of traffic signalization within the city. A&amp;M Electrical is only responsible for maintenance, and they are not responsible for altering the timing of the signals. Finally, the state senate, as was mentioned by some of my colleagues, passed the Act 47 legislation yesterday. This was a major topic of discussion during our Act 205 debate before we went on recess in August. I was concerned then, and am concerned now, that this may mean that the residents of Scranton will see a rise in their wage tax, .75 percent. The bill still has to pass the House of Representatives and needs a signature from Governor Corbett. Also, part of this equation is the fact that we are unsure if the Act 205 tax will survive a recent court challenge that begins tomorrow. There are a lot of different scenarios that can play out here over the next few weeks that may impact our 2015 budget, and it's my hope that the mayor is preparing for an alternative way to approach this. I'm hoping that the mayor has a backup plan, Plan B or Plan C, and that council is involved in these discussions leading up to budget time. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to respond to something that was mentioned by one of the speakers, in the prior council, for four years, we did not have one caucus of council. Not one for four years. Since we have taken, since we have, since the beginning of this year, we have held a caucus prior to every council. When it was deemed necessary, we've held the caucuses in council chambers. Every caucus is open to the public, and we have made every attempt to be open and transparent about everything we are doing. I think it's, to say that we have failed in doing that, I think is a great misnomer. Everyone is invited to our caucus, where we discuss what is going to happen at the meetings, and I feel that we have done a good job in doing that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, providing for the acceptance of utility and access easements in the Laurelwood subdivision located in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Also authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept for the sum of $1 and record in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds official records a deed for the above-mentioned easements.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question.
Yes, on the question. Council did receive a letter from City Planner Don King and City Engineer John Pousas that all of the punch list items were completed and final inspection was approved.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, providing for the acceptance of Aspen Drive, Sycamore Lane, and Azalea Way in the Laurelwood subdivision located in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Also authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept for the sum of $1 and record in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds official records a deed for the above-mentioned rights of Way.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an easement of correction to include additional signatures on the easement agreement, which was recorded on December 24, 2012, to instrument number as noted between the city of Scranton and Colts regarding the planned access road off Bridge Street into the new intermodal center.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 47, 2014, and ordnance, approving and accepting the updated city of Scranton capital budget for the year 2015, the second year revision and extension of the 2013 five-year plan.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved. And might I add, it was not, obviously not the opinion of one.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number 45, 2014, approving penalty, interest, and fee schedule for collection of delinquent refuse fees.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 6B, or excuse me.
No, we're in 7A.
Sorry. Got lost. What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGaw?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the Council Number 46, 2014, as amended, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to execute and enter into a third addendum to the professional services contract with Northeast Revenue Services LLC for the collection of delinquent taxes, to expand the collection services performed by Northeast Revenue Services to include the collection of delinquent annual rental registration fees.
What is the recommendation of Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGaw?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 82, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Community Bank NA to provide paying agent services for the city of Scranton for a period of three years from August 1, 2014 through July 31, 2017.
At this, what is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question. I would like to say that I received a note from Dave Bolzoni, a business administrator, and just reaffirming that what this does is it consolidates the fees that we are already paying for our general obligation debts. It combines them into one paying agent, and in fact, may reduce the actual fees that we pay for the service.
And I believe in the letter that Mr. Bolzoni wrote, he said that the banks will look favorably on that if it's down to one.
Yes.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGaw?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 83, 2014, a resolution authorizing the city of Scranton Police Department to use the company known as Carfax to manage their reportable and non-reportable traffic accident reports via an online service to the public, and allow Carfax to accept payments from citizens for obtaining those accident reports and dispersing those payments to the Scranton Police Department.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGaw?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. There is no further business? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.